You are watching Access LaPorte County, Channel 97. Coming up next, the April 22 meeting of the Long Beach Building Commission Special Meeting. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www accesseslaporte county.org.
Okay. So this is the special meeting of the building commission. We're going to discuss the Wilson issue. Also, after that, we're going to discuss selected building applications. Since the applicants don't know when they're coming up on the agenda, it's a two-fold. If there are applicants that are not either on Zoom or here, we won't discuss those further. But if things are not personal, we can just approve them, that'd be fine. So right now, I'd like to open up the hearing of Mr. Wilson. Mr. Wilson is here and Representative is here also. So I think we had an email that kind of summarized the issues that we had. Of course, Mr. Wilson was suspended for a period of time. We allowed him to go back and finish the projects that he had that were ongoing. However, a number of other violations were found and we felt that we needed to have this hearing to decide exactly what should be done. Let me just read that through.
So what's the date of the court of honor?
Right, that was your court of honor, Mr. Kim, that suspended him from the first court of honor. No, there are two. Why don't you want to read yours first now?
Just for clarification purposes. On or about February 18th, 2022, correspondence was sent to Attorney General Adamski, who represents Mr. Wilson, and laid out a suspension that is as a result of a hearing regarding similar matters of violations. On or on January 26th, 2022, the conclusion of that meeting was that Mr. Wilson's registration would be suspended for a period of six months, beginning on January 27th, 2022, followed by a six-month probationary period, provided that Mr. Wilson strictly complied with provisions of the Indiana Town Code. Also, there was a $2,500 fine levy which was paid by Mr. Wilson, and all of those were conditions to Mr. Wilson being able to finish work or permits which were approved at 1920, as well as 2516 Lake Shore Drive. And the end of the reasons we're here today, there will be a summary of different matters prepared by Mr. Wall, the building commissioner. But that's it for today. Notice was sent out, as well as correspondence on or of April 4th, directly to Mr. Wilson at the direction of giving me permission to send directly to Mr. Wilson by his counsel, who was here today, Brad Damski, laying out the date and time and location of this meeting here today. As you've noted, Mr. Wilson is here in person, as well as my counsel, Attorney Brad Damski, for the purpose of considering the application of his registration and by Wilson's instructions, as well as in person, and/or affiliated entities as a result of additional alleged violations. Suspension.
And just to summarize, unless anybody objects, I'm going to read the list that we have of those additional violations. Number one, 1802 Lake Shore Drive, numerous violations in due to correct them, leaving a four-year roller coaster non-replience. 1900 Lake Shore Drive is number two, various violations in doing work now including a permit, A, front-floor roof, B, deck support column too close to subject system components, C, swimming pool, under C is one retaining wall removal not permitted to start and damage to neighbor's retaining wall, two undermining neighbor's wall footing, three cutting neighbor's wall footing, four installing new footings at 1900 wall not permitted, that does not extend across line. Five, using public access for swimming pool excavation equipment without permission from town slash park department, and under that damaging landscaping against public access. Number three, 2516 Lake Shore Drive, no speaking of permit, the building ramp and access for equipment without reinforcing area growth, nothing extremely dangerous road slash shoulder condition over the Thanksgiving weekend. C, no barricades or warnings for both vehicle or foot traffic. D, while work done is well beyond the scope of original permit. E, gas line cut, problem here, they never called for locates. Previous arguments by Mr. Wilson are ridiculous. Nipstone never marks their own surface, state law that you must call for locates to be two to three days before you dig. Mr. Wilson said, "No big deal, it's a small leak. Any gas leak has a potential for dangers and possibly deadly explosion." Just because it didn't happen, it's a red flag for that type of dark process.
Let me stop you there. So some of that summary gets put together, others probably blend the historical violations, some of which were handled by the initial suspension in earlier years. But I think it's important to set the record with regard to violations since that suspension, given that he was supposed to be in compliance. And the rest of any other things we can address and give him an opportunity to respond to them as well, so it's important to set the record later. Except for the violation subsequent to the suspension.
Right, and I think those two were gas line, and I think the non-committed uses of public access, and then the undermining of the A or C wall. So, yeah.
Foot over, right.
Well, I'm sorry if I said Q up and then put X out. So I guess at this point, those are what I have. Does anybody else on the building commission have anything else? Otherwise, I think we should let Mr. Wilson and his representation respond.
Joe, I read Mr. Wall's report, and I wonder if that should be permanent. And Larry's from the terror, if that should be written or not. I just terrified, Larry, Larry's. I did. Okay, thank you. I didn't know you were reading the level. I'm not.
Okay, anybody else have anything you want to say? Otherwise, go ahead.
Did I hear you, Attorney Brad Damski? I guess just for clarification, I understand the court's position on this, and obviously it was here in February, May as well. You mentioned three properties, 1802 Lake Shore Drive. The two properties, though in particular, 192516, were addressed through the suspension. The idea was any work after that initial suspension could be completed on permits that already approved. I would just make representation of the word of those permits, so it would be either the transfer or attempted to be transferred to new contractors. So this rule says no longer working on either of those two projects. My understanding, anything with 1802, but within prior February?
That's correct.
The gas line was certainly impacted February, stressed out, if you were needing, I believe, with legalness as well. The only issue that it sounds like that was raised after that February suspension was the access, which was actually better covered for whether the board knew it or not. I'm just trying to clarify for the record, what has changed since February? The gas line to... That was that.
To clarify, gas line was discussed at the last meeting. There was repairs done, though, to the retaining wall, right, the undermining since that last time. So that is an issue with regard, there's an issue with regard to whether those improvements or any construction were done under code. And despite the damage that they were in that happened, it did not come to the town's knowledge or brought before this commission, or the building commission, before that last meeting. So those are still in play, and to the extent that 1802 was mentioned at all, again, it's two-fold. One is historical purposes of showing the continued pattern of that, the building commission so chooses, number one. And number two, there are violations that are being corrected that are still under the permit book by Mr. Wilson. So there has not been any proceeding with regard to those at this point. There was a previous suspension as well. But the main, the main problems of today are the rumors that they took out as they presented.
Yes, and that was the only point I was trying to make, was just to try to clarify for the record about disputing those allegations there, as they didn't present them, or just trying to make sure they're accurate, or part of the source of the timeframe.
Wilson, anything else to say?
Yes. I'll start with 1802, that was remodel, the renovation. The renovation work that was done took what was a non-conforming building and made it less non-conforming. This buttress thing, the existing foundation is still worth it. Nothing changes there. In fact, when you moved the porch, that made it more conforming than less. This whole thing with 1802, it's been code. I completely disagree with the interpretation of the building commission on that. If you look at their code, anything you do to make it less non-conforming is acceptable. That house is more in conformance now than the original house. I'll just leave it at that. With 1900, the permit I had was for a pool. The homeowner hired a landscaper who pulled their own permit, who removed the upper basements and during that knocked over retaining wall. I had absolutely zero to do with that. The homeowner hired a landscaper, had nothing to do with my permit. Since that permit was issued, it was transferred over to the pool contractor. I was no longer involved in that project when he brought up permit. If you're going to hold anybody accountable, hold me extra sub. According to these new standards you're holding me to, if Lemay is practicing medicine and he describes medication, and the pharmacist hears something that isn't what he described and then kills the patient, then Bob should be put in jail for murder. That's what you're telling me with these new requirements? And that's not the way it works. What I did with that retaining wall, it's, it's in code. That is a landscape retaining wall. It has not anything to do with the international residential building code. A retaining wall does not have to be all frost line. If you're going to make these statements, start quoting ordinances. I've gotten a lot of stop work order orders where there is no identification of an ordinance, it just says "non-conforming." That isn't what the code is. If you're going to stop the job, you better be able to name the non-conformers. So that's that. What I did with that retaining wall, I was trying to fix an issue that I didn't create, and suddenly I'm responsible for everything. I was the actual good guy in this, who was trying to protect proneness and allow Lemays to be good neighbors. This was, this was permanent. There is a permit you can find for both the roof repair and the emergency permit to do the retaining wall. It's there. I've got a copy of it, and all you have to do is investigate that, so. This thought of I was doing things without a permit, false. That retaining wall I was putting for landscaping meets code, and it was done to protect the neighbor's property. So there is no pool violation there. And the homeowner hired a landscaper, that had nothing to do with the pool permit. There was nothing on my pool permit that had any indication I was doing any landscaping. I had nothing to do with that. And then lastly, with 2516, the, the, what is it called? Utility commission is very specific. There's one person responsible when it comes to utilities. And there's one person responsible for getting locates. That is the excavator. That's in Indiana law. Miss Dig Law clearly states there's one person accountable. Mendoza has had to respond to the utility commission. So to say that somehow I did something wrong, we actually followed, as soon as that line was hit, we followed the guidelines that NIPSCO set up. They tell you to get away from the project, notify them, and then they will send hurry up the project. That was on the street, on an excavated side hill. Nobody was getting at it. Nothing, the thought that explosions were going to occur, that's just lately false. There wasn't, that leak was not, there was no way anything was going to explode. Nobody could even get at it. And NIPSCO had closed out the ticket. What we didn't know at the time, when we called, was they had issued a second ticket for the termination of the gas line. The ticket that they closed off, removed the gas heater and shut down the gas. We did not know the feed, this was not the main, this was a feed over 20 foot off the road that was hit. No one was in danger. That's just the fault. And the bottom line is, the utility commission and Indiana law clearly states it's one person responsible, and that's the excavator, not the general contractor. Comes back to these new standards we're holding together. According to these new standards, if my kid does something who's an adult, I should be charged with deprives since I raised him. I mean, this is just ridiculous. You know, you want to get me, I get it. You don't like me, I get it. But at least find something I actually did wrong. And period is just, you know, you came in a week before I was due to finish, like it wasn't planned, just so that you denied the use of this property for the summer. And you didn't even identify it on the stop work order, what was not to conform, what you're calling it, what tryst I stole, or what that is, even though you can clearly see the original foundation was underneath it. So nothing moved. It was a renovation, and the house didn't move forward, nothing changed. The plans were the same. It was suddenly a week before, you come out and you say, "Oh, it's non-conforming." You know, yes, I worked through the stop work order because I wanted period to have this house to be able to use it for the summer. And as far as I was concerned, I told you're supposed to identify what's not conforming. You don't just say not conforming. And number 2516 was a street cut permit. We weren't doing any work on the street. When I was told I needed a street cut permit, we got it. Nobody said when I was pulling the permit, nor have I ever had to get a street cut permit. And with 1900 Lake Shore Drive, the statement was I needed to get a heavy moving equipment permit. Well, when Bill Cantor went to the county or, they've never heard of such a permit. So, you know, you're just, I don't even know where you're getting it from, but, you know, this thought of, I told, I pulled permit, I think I have what I need to do the job, and then the next day you come and you say, "We're going to stop the job," because you didn't pull a permit. Come on, what permit? I pulled for a renovation, and then you come and you say, "Well, you needed another permit, or you got me." And then your response is, "Well, you should know the ordinances better. I've been working out here for 20 years. I know the ordinances." You know, suddenly, there's like things that are pulled out of nowhere that I'm suddenly supposed to just know, fly. You know, when I go to pull a big permit, if there's additional things needed, I would pop and pay for that permit, but nobody ever says anything. You do the actual, the minute we start work, the next day, somebody shows up and say, "Yeah, you are working without a permit and any sign." You know, this is just, you know, the behavior of this building commission is atrocious. I'm sorry, that's the way I feel about it. You know, it's, it's just a matter of walking around with a big target on my back for life. It's not like I don't do good work. My clients are happy with the work I do. The problems are all related to supposedly me not doing things to code, while half the time, I don't know what the code is anymore, seems to change based on the whims of a building commission. That's all I have.
Comments?
Hey, Bob?
Is anybody else speaking, Mr. Wilson? Okay, now that are...
I can speak? Can I go ahead, Bob? Okay. You know, a couple of things. The, a general contractor is responsible for all their subs. I'm not giving legal advice, I'm just, that's the way the business is. You could talk to lawyers and they can, Chris can, or Mr. Damski can inform you any way they want, but a general contractor, when they hire a subcontractor, is responsible for the actions of their own, of their subcontractors. Second, NIPSCO, as far as this whole gas leak issue and whatever, you guys know, I've already talked about it, but just something to think about. When NIPSCO comes out, if you break a gas line, or if there's a problem that you hit a utility, before they work, they call the locate service. NIPSCO never locates their own utilities. It's always the locate service, and even they use it in emergencies. If we have a fire, the locate people come out. I mean, originally, the NIPSCO trucks will come and do stuff, but before they do anything else, the locate people come out, for NIPSCO, not just for the workers. And lastly, as I'm sure you are all aware of, with being on the building commission, and this is, basically goes back to the basic tenets of building and state code and even our code. A builder, an architect, and/or even an owner, when they apply for a permit, is responsible for knowing all of the ordinances and abiding by all of the ordinances. There are no sneaky ordinances in the town of Long Beach. There is no cloak and dagger, or oh, aha, I got you. A builder, period, if they are applying for the permit, is responsible to know all the ordinances. I just heard Mr. Wilson say he knows the ordinances. If he does know the ordinances, he would know that a street cut permit is required. He would also know if he knows state code and state law that it is required that locates our call. He manages his subcontractors, or at a minimum, is responsible for managing his subcontractors. If his subcontractors, or if my subcontractors on one of my jobs make a mistake, it's my fault as well, because I hired them and I manage them. So, you know, the funnel narrows is down to the general contractor, is, I forget which president it was, the little guy said, "The buck stops here," and that's what happens with a general contractor. So the rest of this is all just muddying the waters. The basic things are, we have rules, the state has rules, we have not targeted anyone. I've tried, on a personal note with the building commission, I have met with Mr. Wilson on numerous occasions and tried to help him along with abiding by the rules, and it just hasn't worked. I guess that's it, unless anybody has any questions for me.
Before you go further, I just want to point out a couple of things to clarify for the record, if you continue this here. Number one, permits were not, what you did was allow the original permits to be amended to substitute contractors, so that those projects could go forward. So I just want to quit attacking Mr. Wilson's representation, I just want to make sure we're all speaking, using the terms, because we also might want to in the future, as Joe has pointed out, have anybody rely on the fact that permits are transferred because your general may or not. In this instance, there were some special circumstances, and there were benefits of original permits. Two, you've heard some representations today that are conflicting that regarding the heat stop damage, one that it was done before the last extension, and one that it didn't involve Mr. Wilson at all. You've also heard and represented today that he's intentionally worked through at least one stop work order at 1802. In addition to the other things that Dr. Payne has laid out, the code, as Larry had summarized, and the last thing I want to point out to you is that Mr. Wilson has not provided you with any authority from NIPSCO or those requirements. So I want to offer those clarifications, and then I leave the rest to consideration.
Any other comments from the building commission?
And my question is, on the gas line issue, the discussed, later, it's Dr. Moon, all this was discussed and decided at the previous meeting, correct? So what are we talking about that for now? That's what I wondered. That was one of the reasons, seeing as given that suspension, February, you?
Right, we're only going to try and concentrate on things that happened since that initial suspension. That's correct. Any questions on that?
Yes, to Mr. Wilson's point about responsible, we started about locating the gas lines. If he's correct, state law, different law requires that the person doing the actual digging is responsible. And what your subcontractor are, whoever does state digging and occurs a problem is the one responsible. So that's the first one. Second point is then, the contractor...
Can you speak up? Can you speak up? I can't hear you.
Second point is, the contractor that did do that work, the landscaper, was he or was he not under your authority? He was not. Okay. So then, that contractor, landscaper, should have had a permit to do that work, is that a record? Is that contractor having enough to do that work? So the problem is, the landscaper did the work without a permit. That's not Mr. Wilson's responsibility. What do you have to do with that? Contract directly with the landscaper to do the work. Mr. Wilson has nothing to do with it.
So, there is a, for Mendoza, who did digging after, there are representations, and we addressed that at previous meetings. So that gas leak, in my mind, doesn't require to do this one, and we are clarifying the records here. And I believe there's a difference with regard to who did it all, what they were told. I disagree with the responsibility, no matter what that, that landscaper did. However, I want to make sure we focus on current violations and how Mr. Wilson has qualified parameters of his suspension, as well as the terms that he'd be able to work under condition here. The ones are all well taken, much like I clarified the record too, because I want to make sure that everything we're all speaking, probably these six says that. these examples of that.
Bob?
Okay, the, the town is always required, uh, a permit to have put heavy equipment on the beach.
Speak up, please.
Okay, the town is always required to, uh, allow, require a permit to have put heavy equipment on the beach. The, uh, pool contractor, um, that pool contractor was under Mr. Wilson's permit. Uh, that permit, that individual company, whatever it was, stated so when we were at the last meeting. And the, the, the town did not provide for anybody to use the town stop to access the beach and tear it up. Um, I don't know where that allowance came from, certainly didn't come from the building commission. Um, regarding the, uh, two, just a general comment, uh, Mr. Wilson seems to think we have people, leads to attack him or trap him. Uh, I don't know how to do a permit. When a permit is issued and work begins, that's when our investigation starts, our inspections start, and I don't know how we can, uh, he seems to indicate that it's our problem, because we come the day after he starts. How can we come on the day before we approve a permit? That's the work that was supposed to be done. And although it's, uh, an example, uh, not pertinent here, but just to give you a general example, in 1802, uh, there were many, many, many discussions about things that went on were, uh, built, uh, not, that were built not according to the original submissions. For one, there's a garage door. For two, uh, certain elements of the buttress. Three, certain elements of the overhang. E, those were not on the original permit. And then initial discussions with the Perry operation was, why are we doing, doing things that were not immediately and, and previously permitted? Whether it was a, uh, non-conforming house, remaining non-conforming, all that kind of stuff, that's another issue. But our initial discussions and conversations with the Perry operation managed by Mr. Wilson were two, were according to items that were not on the original permits, and, and that's how that issue started. We were not, we did not expect any issues, uh, other than do what's on the permit. That's what we've always gone with, that's basically is, is the crux of what we're talking about today.
But 1802 isn't issued today, so let's not talk about 1802 anymore.
Bob? Okay, uh, there seems to be a, a general misconception or misunderstanding, uh, amongst some of the discussion that I've heard here, is that a general contractor can point fingers at his subs and say, you're responsible, I'm not. That is not the case. A general contractor, when they apply for a permit, is the umbrella which all that work is done under. That general contractor is responsible for his subs. His subs are responsible for their work, yes. His subs are responsible for their own insurance, yes. It is up to the general contractor to make sure that that sub is insured, to make sure that sub performs the way he should. You can't just point a finger at a subcontractor and say, you know, this whole job got fouled up because of Mendoza, or Jimmy's undermined service. A general contractor, that, it, it doesn't work that way. It doesn't work, I'm not a lawyer, but I'm telling you, I've been to court. It doesn't work that way in court either. I am the responsible person that signed a contract with the owner as a general contractor. I hired those subs under my umbrella. I can't then just, if there's a problem, turn around and say, oh, I didn't have anything to do with that, that's his problem. Doesn't work that way. I've been doing this 48 years. I'm not talking as a building commissioner now, I'm talking as a resident and a builder. I'm responsible for those contractors, and people on the building commission cannot separate that responsibility, because somebody just sticks something in their ear. The general contractor is responsible for everyone on his job, period.
And with the, you clarified the building applications that are signed, um, by the owner or the owner's authorized agent, which is the person who signs or fills out those applications in this instance, for instance, is Mr. Wilson, they acknowledge, certify that the information that's required is completely inaccurate, that they're responsible for all work allowed by the permit, granted in accordance with the information, uh, plans are verified in there, as well as applicable laws, and, uh, be responsible for the contractor subcontractor to, and to watch. So, those are things that are signed and acknowledged as part of the application process.
Uh, Bob, what, Bob?
Here's the thing Larry said, but I'd like to see, unless we want to stay here all afternoon, what exactly are we citing Mr. Wilson for this, at this hearing? Like, just give me a list of one, two, three, four specific items that we're here for and that he's done wrong since the February meeting. That's all I ask.
Bob?
Go ahead, Larry.
Uh, you know, one other thing, I don't know if I made clear or not, everything that I've said is based on, not just the town of Long Beach ordinances, it's based on the IRC, which is the Indiana Residential Code, which is state law, not Long Beach. It's very easy to pick up a copy, there are some in that room, I believe, and one of the first things under administration is that a contractor is responsible for everything on the job. I mean, it, it's just clear as day. And, and John, I appreciate your wanting to list, uh, you know, all, all these violations or whatever. This is a basic general habit, that I have tried to meet with this individual to correct the problems that have happened over years and years and years, and currently and since the February meeting. And to be perfectly frank, I'm beat up. It never stops, it's always a problem. Thank you.
Mr. Coker's point, it is important for what we're doing today to point out and memorialize the violations that made Mr. Wilson in conflict for this suspension from, that has sent out after, decided at the January meeting. He, he has been suspended on two other occasions, but those matters, I might disagree with it in terms of the applicability of 1802 today and some representation of he purposely, uh, worked through a stop work order, and there may be outstanding violations, but I, I, more to Mr. Coker's point, that we, he did it with specific, uh, in terms of sending out a notice for this hearing, there are the violations of the terms of the February 2022 correspondence that laid out the six month suspension, defined to be followed by a six month probationary period, um, given the representation, and one of those seems to be the damage of the stop, right? That, that is one of those, uh, one of the items that have happened. If he's been cited since then, I think it's important that Mr. Mellon or whomever would have cited make those part of the record, but I do think it is incumbent upon us to address the new things that are violations with substantial reasons this day.
The two, uh, violations that we should be concerned about today, the access issue of stop 18, and the gas line of 256. Anything, anything else we've discussed is probably not germane to this discussion.
Bob?
Yes.
I hate to keep interrupting you. The insurance, uh, business has a, a saying, that frequency breeds severity. That's, that's it all I'll say.
I'm sorry, say that again, Larry.
The insurance, uh, business as a general, they, they often say that frequency breeds severity. That's, that's not a fact, it's just, I'll toss it out.
And though, and I know it's frustrating, I know there's a history here that we've laid out, those things, in my mind, my advice gives, can be considered with regard to whatever decision you ultimately make, but today, we need to determine that there is a violation of the terms of the suspension as laid out in your correspondence. So, if there is a violation of the code, including violations of those permits, or what Mr. Wilson was allowed to do, or what he was responsible for, that he didn't oversee to the point of layout, it, it seems to me, the two issues that have been discussed, that have occurred since that last meeting, are one, the beach stop access and subsequent damage to the stop, as well as the retaining wall, and whether that was done to code, whether that was done, uh, with, with a permit, et cetera. If there are other things that we're aware of, those should be, now would be the time of discussion.
The gas line, that also, yeah, and to the others, I think to Larry suspended them for that.
Those, those things can be taken into account as a history of, let's say, for instance, and I'm not advocating for position, if you were trying to revoke his registration, I think that the severity of any time that will be attached to that, the continued habit of that, if you determine would go to the severity, the gas line, minus you, whatever you'd like to do. In my mind, you dealt with the gas line in the January year, which was the, uh, laid out in the February correspondence. That gas line did not happen, that was discussed at length, if you held them accountable, like, fined them, you suspended them, and then you gave them a recent period. So, what, what is being alleged now is that he broke the terms of what you laid out at that meeting. I'm not aware.
One of the things that, that comes to mind, that's happened after his last suspension, was the installation of the retaining wall, uh, next to 1902 property, and that was done to support the patio of 1902. So, three things took place that are on VTR, that's what you used, because of course, that's the only way to get to the backyard, is, uh, the park access. Secondly, the stop work order was, um, violated, and thirdly, um, the retaining wall was not permitted, um, an application was put in for a retaining wall and for roofing, um, and, uh, Mr. Wilson didn't have a permit for the retaining wall. That's all I know.
Only thing I had is, uh, the retaining wall, I think, part of the law, may I'm wrong, but yeah, but shouldn't have to do to mitigate your damages. If walls gave it in, Mr. Wilson says he didn't do that, and it's the landscaper's problem. Whoever's problem was, it was reaching the problem of security of the wall, he apparently saw that and tried to limit the damages, and then he, the damages have been greatly increased, having not done anything, as I said, of the mitigation issue. That's all.
And to clarify, I think that general, uh, interpretation of the law is correct, which, again, as Mr. Adamski tried to lay out before, but tried to work with the neighbor to address that issue, is they wanted to mitigate any potential damages, and actually have a duty under law for interpretation type things. The bigger problem with regard to that is, I see it, as Mr. Mellon just pointed out, he didn't have a permit for those. So, then the issue is, was there an emergency, was something done, and that's for you to determine, but what has been laid out is what I've asked for. What are the violations upon which this building commission can make a decision one way or another with regard to the purpose of this hearing?
So, who gives the damage?
The landscaper. Mr. Wilson said the landscaper did the damage, and he also indicated, when he testified here, that the landscaper also did the damage to the stop, and that he didn't have, and he wasn't under, the landscaper wasn't under contract, and did I understand that right, Mr. Wilson?
That's correct.
John, Bob, look, we've been over this several times. The pool people did the damage to the stop under the permit that Mr. Wilson took out for the pool. That was not a landscaper. That was the pool people that went down under Mr. Wilson's permit to build the pool. That's it. There, the, the, no landscaper brought heavy equipment down. Let's, let's move, can we move along here?
Those representations were made before the town council as well, in, in their efforts to negotiate the license agreement, explain how that would have happened, and indeed, at least in part, it happened for, I, I can't speak as to which one, but at least in part, it was as a result of taking equipment to the pool, and that permit is under, and, um, Mr. Switzer has kind of illustrated it laid out, and there are several permits that were granted for that property, and many things that could and were done in compliance with, number one, the code, and number two, the parameters of the suspension, and then there were some things that had been outside, such as the damage or the access to that, to the beach side.
It seems to me there are clearly violations, so can we move beyond that? Or can I, can I answer that? I was under the impression that the gas line occurred after his suspension, but is that not correct, that happened before his last suspension? Okay, got it. Okay, any other discussion? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion? Anybody want to move on? All right.
I thought we had to determine first if there were violations, what are we making motion?
I think we have determined there have been violations.
Okay, I believe that, yes, there have been violations.
And I'll second that. All favor say aye, but actually, Larry, I believe you're going to accuse yourself, is that correct?
Yes, I am, thank you.
Listen, you and Larry accusing themselves, and both have people.
They have, we will call the department, because we don't have a reason here, so we should remember.
Okay, can we, can we, about where are the specific violations, chapter, verse? That was, that was going to be my question also, what specific violations are, am I going to bow on something that's just been violations?
It's supposed to be Mr. Wilson's argument.
And, and I think it would be appropriate to lay out those, those violations that have occurred, that very violation in terms of the suspension.
You suggested that it's part of the, yes.
So, Joey, with your motion, are you prepared to lay those out, or?
So, the one violation was, um, accessing through the park word.
Chapter first. A specific law. Or a term in the mission.
Well, more important than this, damage to the stop, there was damage to.
Maybe the company, sorry, on board, and he wasn't on, if we feel that we need more particulars, I, I would possibly suggest that we go back and reconvene another time and try and answer these questions, with some research, and understanding what we did and then move and have a code.
I think, I think that's a good idea, Joe.
Do we need to have that information throughout the day?
I have a question for Mr. Wilson, also. What's the damage, where you, what, contractor, pool contractor, are they under your umbrella, or they're under your, uh, subcontractor?
Uh, the, the permit was pretty tricky, I don't know that had, so it's hard to gather to stop. Yes, the permit was.
Okay, at the time, the damage occurred, it was incurred, but that contractor was under your, it's a subcontractor.
Okay, yes, all right.
Yeah, what, what I'm suggesting is that the research and the campaigns and everybody.
Yeah, I'm just trying, any questions for Mr. Wilson to answer that, I don't think we need more.
I understand, but we have to. Can I make one comment? I'd like to know the last time Larry hit the gas line.
That's, that's really not, it's not looking, obviously, we need to have that information in that today.
I think it's important for you to set a record, to make findings, and the more thorough, obviously, the more solid around that, you know? So, in my opinion, you need to have specific sites, and if there are applicable code sections that are live, and you're prepared to do that, then you can move forward. I don't think that there is a code section that says you don't get the damage to that property, that was an obvious one that they did, but with regard to any other specific violations, not worrying with a permit, if you're prepared to cite the code sections and that he violated, I think you can move forward, and that's all that, that, Ken and Mr. Coker are asking, sure, and most of them are appropriate requests. You can also continue the hearing if you'd like to, to a different thing, you can both close the public hearing now and make your determination at later date, or you can cite the. or you can cite the petition and get my recommendation is specifically this stuff.
So I'm satisfied that damage was done to the town stop. And there was no permit to access the beach. But to me, just damage to the town stop is sufficient. It should have been, I don't know anywhere to get the idea that they had the permit over town stop. It just, why not? I just don't get that. That's, you know. So to me, there's sufficient indication that standard operating procedure was not followed. And that's what we really voted on in February. That we could somehow trust contractors to do what they're supposed to do. And that is not, to me, that's a egregious example of failure to understand and abide by town rules. And it just moves a consensus. Damage was done, the town has not been compensated for that, nor any offer made. So I'm satisfied with the status right now.
I think there have been offers made to prepare the stops, absolutely, yes. In fact, there's a agreement entered into with the town house to address.
Yeah, Mr. Wilson was involved in that.
Yeah, those don't really have elements to what you're doing other than rule three.
And we're making the correction out of the permits and transfer. You got an agreement with the town council.
I'm not talking about now, I'm talking about then. Had the damage occurred, the pool permit was under the auspices of Mr. Wilson.
You're correct. All of his corrections, he said there was no offer for me to go off, that's incorrect.
Okay, I stand corrected. But of course, the damage to the town stop, I'm certain that that's what happened. And had the town not addressed it, nobody would fix it.
I'm confident in stating that the single act of work that was done since Mr. Wilson's last suspension was the installation of the retaining wall. Three violations occurred because of that, he didn't have the building permit, violated the stop order, and went over town property to do the work. So I think that's really all we have to deal with, is one event and then three violations.
As I said, I believe that could be, in fact, because of all this conversation we've had, and not people who like it, but I think we should do research and then we could be more specific. And if the issues we're talking about are correct, that's fine. If we wait, whatever, a week, a couple of weeks, I don't see any damage for any of them in that regard.
Well, then I know on the BCA, you specify what code section or what violation or what statute or regulation is set in your filings. And so if there's a violation under some of our code, those have to be specified and then the facts back that up for it. And then we now are voting on, and then Mr. Wilson would know if he wanted to take additional relax or whatever his is. But he would know specifically what we voted on and why.
So Chris, would it be possible for you, before our next building commission meeting, to give us a list of violations, where there's specific violations, explanation where there isn't? And we can maybe schedule this hearing to go around our next building commission meeting with that information in hand?
I can do whatever you'd like to direct. And also, it's somewhat, it could even determine whether you want to continue the public hearing in general. Because as this conversation has continued, one of the bases for acting on missions is the deliberate misrepresentation of material facts, broader deceit in obtaining, preventing registrations. It has come to our attention, and I'll make sure that we have that, and I'll circle back with Joe and make sure of the presentation. Because the new pool contractor has indicated that there was an intentional misrepresentation of the amount of the project. He subsequently paid a different set of price, and we'll make sure that we get appropriate statements from them as well. So for your purposes today, you can make a decision if you choose to move forward, there's a motion in the second, you can go with that procedure. You can decide to continue to make no decision today and leave the public hearing open for the presentation of additional testimony and other evidence, or you can close it and leave your determination based on what was presented today.
Do we have to address the motion?
You do. Just withdraw, and then you can make one of that.
I'll make one.
I'll make a vote, continue here. Yeah, just do it.
To the next regular year, building commission meeting, which is the May 13th. Larry, you have a calendar to show when the next meeting is.
Did you say, not a certain period, did you say you want to continue the meeting?
Continue the meeting?
Yes. Then what does continue the meeting to a future date? Oh, to a different date, okay, it's not going to, later than now, it's going to continue to a different date.
May 13th, that one year.
That's a fine.
Then we would ask the part of the chair about courtesy two, is that we are actually notified two specific expectations so that we can appropriately respond to that at that time, ahead of time.
Yeah, listen, I already have one based on, you know, this expectation about, I'm sure based on today, so then nobody's going to say today.
And I'll second the motion.
Yes.
All right. Go, go, go. Joe, go.
Yes.
And Paulson?
Yes.
Dan, go.
Yes.
Pete, go.
Yes.
Me, yes. Okay.
How about Joe?
I'm sorry, I missed. Joe, please. Yeah, how about their specific issues? Okay. All right. So, hearing is continuing till May 13th. So I think we have just a proper dedication that as you, you know, we'll try and deal with people who are here. If they're at all controversial, the people who are requesting the permit aren't here, are able to represent what they want, what they don't want, we'll continue that till the next meeting, so go ahead.
Okay, so, I'll say, the top of this is 2516, and I just left. Maybe you can notice, we can talk about this.
This could, this is in here.
Yeah. Do we need that?
Do we need it? All right.
Turn it. I wish you were talking about 2516.
Well, let's say we're in fire. But Lynn isn't here or, it's not her.
Yeah, I know that he was here to represent, I wasn't here for that, I was where. He was transferring the permit or transferring a net, so this is all, that's all. So the single question here is, I would know about the transfer of this application, we're going to write this up, and then write in substitution. Yeah.
But one of their issues also with the site plan, I believe we couldn't see setbacks like that. No, that's within the last minutes.
Got you. Then, uh. When we're talking about the permits, this is maybe more general, but it implies. When we talk about a permit, we're talking about whatever the word is, transferring or whatever. The concern I have is that all of a sudden, we've heard from John Popper.
I did, Joe.
The general contractor. And he submitted alternate plans, site plans, and everything else. And then all of a sudden, Joe Jagan now is going to be your new contractor. Now, what I feel concerned about is that I have to, Joe Jagan has to satisfy the building commission, that now I, if I'm using all of Mr. Popper's documentation, site plans, everything else, then I would believe I should submit a new permit, and I should then also submit whatever documents I'm using of Mr. Popper's, and saying that now they're my documents, and that I'm responsible for those documents. And I'm not asking necessarily for an extra dollar, but I am asking that I think we need some, we need a new person, general contractor, to sign off on any documents that Mr. Popper had for the permit. That's just my concern, where we're talking about these transfers and everything else. I think we need, because like, for example, in this particular project, there are some documents that have been submitted, and we're reviewing it. There's still a permit that hasn't been approved, and we're still reviewing those documents. Now, all I would like is that whoever is going to run the vote, or whoever's going to general, they're signing off, either they're using the same documents that were submitted, or they're reviewing new documents. That's either one. But I think that should be in the new permit application from the new contractor and such.
I think by definition, by the amendment, amended petition, that they are adopting those, and that they will be, and if you were inclined to grant that permit, perhaps you make that as part of your finding, you know, or a condition of that permit, that this is based on plans submitted, and they're adopting them. And so that if they have an objection, either way, if you're not incorrect in your sentiment, I'm just giving you an option with regard to how to address that, is you can get up and say, hey, we want you, you're adopting them, or you're considering, but to resubmit, really what they're asking is, all they're asking, and most of it, is you substitute the contractor, and they're adopting by definition what's submitted. So you work around that to address, Joe, and my point is that you could make a condition that it's based on documents submitted, plans, et cetera, whatever you're basing that on, and that no other workers be.
But from experience, that I've had, and what's happened through the years here, that it's easy to say, okay, I'll submit an email, I'll send it to another email, and I'll do this and that. I think, I personally like to see that, okay, the project is moving to another person, another contractor, whatever, submit everything, we don't want another email, this changed, that changed. This is what I'm going to do, and it's all in one place. And we don't have to go back and try to take it out. Okay, now this other contractor submitted X, Y, and Z. Well, where are X, Y, and Z? I'd like the new guy to submit X, Y, and Z again. It's not difficult, it's not costly, but that way, we give a package that's consistent, that has everything in it, and we're not going to guess where is this, where is that? Well, that's one of my major concerns.
Difficulties and exploits are relative, and that's for you to decide. I think the difficulty here is, as we just talked about the last few meetings, is even considering or setting these things for consideration at all in these meetings, that you don't think, these are points to be brought up, and that's second on agenda is number one. Or number two, those applicants weren't told that at previous meetings, or we've talked about them at least two. So to now do that is what needs the frustration. So my point to these is, as you guys figure out, work on this checklist, and how to streamline some of these things and cut off your time, something to consider, is that going to be something good for them to know over the last couple of meetings as well, because that hasn't been discussed. So that they know, they have a road now, and they know where to go, because now they're waiting yet another few weeks to get the order. If you're not inclined to grant it, so I don't think your sentiment is wrong to make it, but it goes along with not even considering this, and so it's not, or at least giving them the roadmap of what's expected. So that they can, especially when these actual contractors scheduled availability materials are, or even worse than before in terms of trying to schedule.
Yeah. I don't want to go wrong. No, all I'm saying is that if the new contractor, what is he going to submit? That's all I want to know. I don't care if it changes anything or nothing or something. I want the new contractor, so we have the starting product. This is what we have, and the new contractor says, I'm using these prints, this site plan, everything else. That's all I'm asking for. I'm not asking for your extra work, but I want a lot coming in one place, from one person, to start the whole building again. So we go here, so we have concrete, and I know what the builder wants to do.
Except you haven't approved permit, and there.
No, we haven't. No, we haven't.
From, for those that are being substituted, you haven't approved permit. Let's use, let's use Mr. Wilson as an example. Instrument was approved, and what is being sought is to substitute contractors, yes?
So, Chris, you're talking about no permit is issued.
That, so that's what we're, that, those are the things.
Okay, no permit is issued for this.
So then, so just for that, where there's that, you still have these submitted materials from Mr. Wilson, or instances that are, or whoever it is.
Let's talk about those slides specifically, 2516, that's what we're talking about. I was talking about 2516. 2516 got a couple of different permits, a demo permit, and I don't know if there was another. Bailey's got the one permit, it was a demo, and the other permit was the combination. So they have two permits, fine, no argument. Then they submitted a third permit, which is.
An application.
Which is expensive. They're putting, they're putting a garage on the second floor, they're having a capital lever garage, and they're doing a lot of things. Those documents we have here, there, can, but nothing's true.
So what it seems to me is that you want the end run, or you need to make a decision as the commission, that you just don't want to transfer these. Because what you're asking for, no, no, it's not a negative.
It is, it is. They do want the, the, the.
Let me finish, let me finish here. What I'm saying is, from a simplicity standpoint, if there's already, for instance, Mr. Wilson submitted an application that wasn't approved, and we don't have an approved permit for a certain segment of their, their approval, right? But there was an application, plans, et cetera, that were submitted, and then we have a contractor that wants to, that is willing to step in Mr. Wilson's shoes. One solution may be that you take that amended application and staple it to the one that was submitted, and those are all together, we have those somewhere. Alternatively, make the decision of, we're not going to allow any substitutions, we're not going to do this, and you submit an entirely new package, so that you can keep. I understand you want to keep them all together, but I would suggest there's ways to streamline these, because for the homeowners, as you might imagine, it's frustrating, and then if they end up having to go to the BCA, that could take two, three months. And so I'm trying to assist you with, much like the discussion that came about regarding the substitution and amendment and all, where you. Remember the law.
At the last building commission meeting under 2516, mature broad, it says, there we submit an amended application, changing the contractor, and clarifying the site plan one week prior to the next meeting. Have we received an amended site plan?
They have, not amended, it's the original site plan that was submitted.
Oh, we wanted more details, correct? We discussed the details we needed at that last meeting.
First of all, what's an amendment you're talking about?
Start looking at the minutes, Joe.
Pardon?
The minutes of the 4/8/22 meeting.
I think that was the last meeting, right?
That's what I said, yeah.
That was the.
Oh, okay.
And all, all the last thing, I didn't like. Try, okay, Joe, let me make, we will, I make a motion that when somebody wants a transfer permit, we make them attest to the fact that they won't just read and abide by the documents previously submitted. You know, okay, in the sort of. Sure, I can ask you a question. Where do you, how do you know that the documents that were previously submitted? We didn't do it. It is what, yeah, we didn't have a study? Yeah. I mean, that's the, we're, no contractor will assume the responsibility by, by a required contractor without reviewing the plans much, doesn't he know that the structure is designed the same? You know, so the plans that are submitted, if the contractor is willing to assume the permitted project, he's not about getting the plans to come in. The odds, can I, can I?
Uh, this is Gordon Lynn. Am I live?
Yes, okay. Go ahead.
I have, uh, tried to follow the rules that you gentlemen have set forth. I thought that we did that coming into the meeting. I don't think there were any discrepancies early on, even in our application. Uh, but we did what you asked. And, and we wanted to see this ourselves. As I've said before, we are builders. And have been a licensed contractor and he's there for many years. We will, um, follow the rules and we will use local subs and we'll get this project off the ground. And the timing is everything, as you know. And it's a very difficult workplace in which to get subs. Um, but, um, we will, um, follow the rules and we think we have, up to this point, we don't see a, a need with the, with the plans as they are to make us spend money or delay the timing of this project. Um, the permit has been paid for. Supposedly, according to the last meeting, we needed a new site plan or we need to show it to you again. I did hear that in the last meeting. We were muted in the last meeting and could not speak. Um, but, but I don't, um, I don't know if you, gentlemen, realize the value of time, but I think in the last many days, this project has really escalated the costs. As you know what kind of inflation environment we're in. We need to, um, have your help in getting this, um, particular home, which will be a credit to the neighborhood, started and completed. We are 14 months away from our initial problem. Yeah, 14 months is correct. And we have a, a contract with our insurance people to remodel this home within two years. Whether that's going to be adjustable or not, I don't know. But we, um, uh, we need to get moving and then we'll do all possible once we have this permit to do that.
Hi, uh, this is Judy Lynn. I, I would like to say, um, I own Thomas Homes in Hinsdale, Illinois. And I was a licensed contractor and a builder and remodeler for close to 20 years. I never had one violation or one issue, and you can check on that. I know how to read the rules. I know how to read prints. We will be there. That's our home. We love it. We've had it for 34 years. We're not young. We own, and it's terrible what's gone down this past, it's long. And now we have insurance where we don't know if we go any further, if they'll pick up their share. It's, um, this is our second year out of, out of our house due to water pipes that broke. It was not our fault. It was never a fancy house. We never wanted it to be. And we're not doing any big extravagant. We're just trying to make it so my husband and I can retire there. Anyway, this has been so frustrating and we need your help. We will do it however you want to do it. Just let us get our lake house back. Thank you.
Good. Can I finish? What we're doing, we're all agreeing, just what you said or anybody else, the only thing is so simple is that. We can, the, the only, the only thing, I just want to assure everyone, us, the builder, the owner, everything else, that we're all working off the same plans. And all I'm saying is that if we're going to a new contractor, I was just asking the new contractor, he could go to the old contractor and say, here we go, the plans, take them and hand them to us. That's fine. Or the other thing that you're saying is we have some plans, okay? So we're going to give them to the contractor? I'm just, it's that simple. Who's going to initiate the new plans? The plans for the place? And all I'm concerned about is we have the same plans. And either they're going to give it to us or I think what you're saying, we're going to give it to them. And my motion was to have the future contractor attest to the fact that the plans submitted are the ones that he's going to abide here in the story. That's just simple. And we didn't really say, it'd be nice.
Okay, let's go. Can I take that as a rule? My call alone.
Yeah, the site plan that came yesterday? Because that's what I've got, because I've got an email from Janet Carlson yesterday that has two attachments, one of which is the site plan. Has everybody had a chance to look at that? So we've got this again, going on the group's permit.
Well, the first paper. I'm just going on the.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. All right, so there's motion second.
You guys, who's this being transferred to? It, it, it doesn't matter. Anybody. My motion was anyone who changes, at least transfer a permit. That's the process they will follow. It could be this one, it could be the next one, it could be anybody. Only, only we'll leave on the process itself, transferring permit. I was hoping that they said, uh, recently forward, a transfer is supposed to reach the level is to keep the ball rolling and help the resident or the homeowner keep their project going without having to go through this whole secondary process of a contract, second contractor. Like that contractor will send a contractor's book to, uh, assume the responsibility by a provision and brands all the way to the government. So, yeah. My site, I have these motion. And there's a big explosion of addresses that's on the. Right, right, just now. So all I can do there, that's okay. The contractor's been agreed to the point. Okay, who's going to give them the plans to agree? That's the plan, that's the one the owner and the contractor. Okay, and whatever the owner gives to the contractor, is that the same plans that we got from the first contractor? You want to check the show?
Yes.
If the plan might.
Yes. The owners. Joe, a question for today. What's pending today? Is an amended, right, there's an amended application, can we call it that? No, I'm asking.
No, that's my, would you.
Is there an amended application? Right, that's what ultimately will be decided. Why not take that application and staple it to the one that was approved? Because that's what it's meant to, right? The entire package, as to Ken's point, what I necessarily did this about is a contractor or my client. I'm not, I don't hold that responsibility. If they choose to do it under that, that scenario, keep it moving. And what harm is there to take the previously either, or the previously submitted application? Let's use Mr. Wilson as an example. And staple the amended application to it and have that be the package. And then have, as Peter's suggesting, we may need to look at the code or whether this is just a rule and a condition that you're going to continue to have and whether the ordinance is made to be changed. But what is the harm in doing that versus creating more work for the contractor? Here, you already have the package, remember if I'm wrong. You're the keeper of the records. You have the files.
And that's why I don't want to.
But that's, but that's what I'm asking, so.
Things come and go and I don't get everything. There's emails, everything else that I don't get. And that's.
But, but you have an amended application. You have an amended application and then a new contractor who wants to be substituted. Why not, when that comes in, you staple it to the entire package and that's what gets submitted to the entire commission with the, as part of the process, that new contractor? This doesn't have a law, right? This is a unique circumstance where we're really, and just want to make it easier for everybody. That seems to be an easy solution.
That's what we're trying. You, you guys, she, we're, I disagree, that's fine. I know I want to.
I do. Got motion and set. We need to roll forward again. Joe, I think you first.
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Joe?
No.
John?
Yes.
Ivan?
Yes.
I'm in, yes. Okay, so now we've got, so great, that's how we're going to handle that. We currently got a new site plan yesterday with an email. Has everybody had a chance to look at that?
Mr. Sam, I was moved, uh, uh, last November.
Weren't there issues with that that we had?
We actually voted on, uh, this particular permit back in, um, I'm not sure whether it was March, um, or February, but, um, Larry was not here and we, we voted to, um, approve the, um, the application, the building permit. And then Larry's looking at the prints.
So Larry, you looked at the prints?
Larry, to remind you, after that, we sent out an email that explained, uh, what the problems were.
Yeah, Larry is in the meeting. I just hit the F on mute button. All right, well, so Larry, can you hear us? Shake your head, yes or no? Okay, have you had a chance to review this permit? Shake your head.
Are you on mute there? Invite that as a new.
Okay, Bob, can you hear me?
Hey, so.
Yes, I will review the permit.
Will you review it?
Pardon me?
Yeah.
I have not.
You're muted.
Okay, so.
I, I will review it today. I have not reviewed it.
So at previous meeting, for this permit ending, you're in, you can view.
Excuse me, may I say something, please? This is Judy Lynn. This is where we were in February. We were approved, March we were approved. We had another meet, uh, another conference call, which we did two weeks ago or a week ago. And there was nothing wrong with the site plan. It's just that you couldn't see it clearly, so you wanted a clearer one. We got that through you. We paid for the permit. We are taking over. We're taking the responsibility of the GC. I don't know what else to say. Just give us the permit. Nothing has changed. It's totally the same permit.
Uh, Bob?
Human, human.
And plan. The plan, excuse me, the plans are the same. We have not.
So Larry, what we need for you to do is, if you could look at it, if you approve it, you could let the Linds know that they're approved. If you don't approve it, we'll bring you back to the next meeting and discuss the problems, okay?
I will do that, Bob.
Who else can I have for us?
Uh, I've got, uh, 1704 story, which is Sonny Phillips', um, uh, application for, um, a crawl space foundation for her for, uh, bathroom addition to her house. Uh, we previously at the last meeting determined her, um, application was incomplete. Um, since then, we have gotten, um, a lot more clarity, uh, better than her. And, um, the three stipulations that were concerned about last name. One, uh, that the door, um, from her bedroom that now goes into, um, will be, um, the crawl space footer will be locked. Uh, there'll be a snow fence put around, um, the crawl space. And thirdly, um, uh, within 90 days, we'll get, um, prints to, um, finish the bathroom. Um, since then, we have gotten architectural prints, uh, for the bathroom. So that one's already applied there. Discussions.
I will move to approve.
Second.
Session. Go. All right, so. What? Ken?
Hi.
Joe?
No.
John?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
I'm here. Okay. Next, oh, there, oh, there, yeah, you can hold on to this. All right, can you hear us? Muted, Ken. Larry, you're muted.
Sorry, I was, I, I didn't realize I was muted. Yes, yay.
Next one.
Uh, 2114 Lake Shore Drive, Jim Moschappi. They used, um, applied to, uh, put in a foundation for, uh, a crane on top of the seawall that puts, uh, the jet ski, um, from the backyard into onto the beach underwater. Uh, our concern was, this is additional coverage, but, um, it's not going to, um, but they're going to play the substitution game and move a small amount of patio, um, which is larger than the actual foundation for this crane.
That's still a case of this, a part of this case, is it within the protection of 1066?
No, this is just a foundation for a crane, not where the patio is, or where the, the crane is going to be put, right?
Well, yeah, a small crane, it's not running in 60 hours.
Probably.
Um, that's, that's still, that's a structure. So is it within 1066? We don't know if people do small vehicles, um, things. It's due protection of neighbors after that.
I don't have the information.
Is, is that a little construction or data and some mechanical device?
By, by, it's going to be there permanently, yes. But they'll even, even talk, I, I start making that maintenance. Differentiate between subsurface and surface structure. 1066 is something that's been on extra product covered. I like it, but also like it. And we've been, and we've been very strict in pushing. How about a site plan? Should have a site plan. Tom said, it should be on. We're good.
Well, Tom said we need a site plan and we need to know what, what the specifics are of this crane that is, I'll kind of look at the first and sit by it, so.
Nice.
Kind of thing. All right, so let's, let's put that off and let them know we need it.
Quite good. Uh, 2049, Lake Shore Drive, um, is an addition. This, um, application was also deemed as incomplete. Um, but in fact, it really was completely, not only got the email, apparently. Um, they are reducing, like, coverage from 54 to 52%. And we have prints planned to, um, accurately describe, uh, literally describe what these people are doing. One, the Kelly's, um, the contractor on job. 2049. We got it March 21st. I'm not named March 21st.
Can we get April 11th? It's not on April 11th.
So I see, you, you said here, um, 331, that they were 35% of this in total, a lot of coverage. And then a six of six of the permit application said coverage was going to increase by 2.66%. And I guess I, I ask for a minute that that plan get changed.
But that's what I have as well. How do we present the reason for 37% of significant?
This one. 244.
No, no.
So then we got an email from Indiana with two attachments that show the site plan. We got an attachment on three twenty eight from Indiana that showed there was supposed to be an amended site plan. Now, this is all section coverage calculation, saying it went down. But then when I looked at the two site plans, I see no difference, then I asked, so what am I missing? Do you, do you know what I'm missing?
They say they're removing seventy-one, or being a patio, reduce a lot of everything. I don't see where they're removing it.
Yes, I would suggest that we need to see where they're removing it, and if they need to make that through, through the next meeting. That sound okay, everyone? I make a motion to push this through next meeting.
What do I do?
A second.
Joy?
Hi.
Larry?
Hi.
Larry? Larry's still muted, okay.
Move, move here?
Sorry, yes, Bob, bye.
Yeah, I didn't say yes.
Okay. Uh, John Coker?
Yes.
Ebyla?
Yep.
I'm in favor of that. Okay, then we'll listen next one.
Actually, there's a twenty twenty-one, no rose, this is an addition. Uh, this will also mean there's an incomplete, uh, application. Uh, since then, we have, the review checklist has been completed and submitted to us. Everything that the guy looked at, including the science documents, the plans I brought here, like, two weeks ago. Everything looks in order to make. Everything's replied to. Discussion. What we approve then?
Twenty twenty-one, alright?
When we just talked about. Yes.
There a second? I didn't, I didn't. Did everybody get, get an email of those prints that you gave to me?
What do we do?
Good. I think you dropped them off at my house, right?
Yeah.
Right. And did everybody else get a copy of those on email or something?
No, the plans were submitted previously.
Yeah.
That is, we know a lot of them. The client, or?
Yes. And look at the video.
Who with it?
I would say yes.
What about a final motion?
You have a second, a second. Okay, I'll second for discussion. Discussion. Any more motion and discussion?
I just have a little conversation on some of our coverage population.
About thirty-four percent, on a line that's twelve thousand five hundred forty square feet.
Okay, let's do it. Uh, Larry? Larry?
Yeah.
Hi?
Yes.
Joe?
No.
Joy?
Hi.
Ken?
Hi.
Uh, John Coker?
Hi.
E?
Hi.
I'm not, okay. Next one.
It is. Twenty-two fifteen, Chastleton, uh, which is a bright, that's why I'm going right now, the way the house. Uh, there's a screened porch on the side of the house, uh, that, uh, uh, is, uh, not safe. Uh, there's a board concrete floor that is cracked. That's all this thing is, I think they have. Uh, they're looking to remove and replace screened porch with a pre-seasonal room, the, uh, toward the sliding, uh, plastic windows. No new addition to, um, any, um, coverage, and the footprints are safe.
And no change in volume either, right? No change in volume, it's already the same volume, I need to replace. Have you approved it?
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, I, this was, uh, I was actually. Right. There was, uh, some coverage calculation, too. So maybe you represent it.
The, the coverage calculation, it is an issue because there have been that changes in the size of the porch.
I have a problem with where you're talking to the square footage. It is ninety-five times eighty-six, which is not the dimensions of this property. But that's, if it doesn't apply, it doesn't matter, I understand. You start saying the dimensions of this property is eight thousand one hundred and seven. And I'm saying it's sixty-four, uh, six thousand four hundred and five. But that doesn't matter. I don't, I don't like any, this would be the numbers for that one.
My comment, after looking at the, I'm good, I mean, they were proposing, you know, the bottom. You're telling me that that's not the case. Can we have them represent that on the permit? There's certainly have been writing that there is no change, because if there is, we will go on that one. Yeah. That sound okay?
Sure.
Okay. So motion and a second. With that convention.
I'll say.
Okay. Uh, Joy?
Hi.
Larry?
Uh, Bob, I'm, I'm not familiar with this one. I, I, I better not vote.
Ken? No, no. John, or E?
And, and, and certainly, certainly, there's already more things that are listed, but it's, oh, yeah, there's a, there's a, there's a, about this, it's actually, so. I took this one. It's a ratio. I don't get it. Especially, say, no. We're only standing to approve structural.
Well, that's, but if they represent that.
That nobody can worry about it, it's not changing the, the coverage, what we're told.
And what are they doing here?
Reflecting on a screened porch.
So, I said, now, screen, help you. During, we had a ninety-six, or a screened porch, uh, brought on the wall, these ones. Was considered by, and then we said, we're closing, we said, it's fine, this is. These, the pre-seasonal room has walls. So, so does the screened porch?
Yeah, so does the screened porch. So that, that, so they're not increasing it, they're just changing the form, right? That, that's the form of understanding. From a variance standpoint, they're not increasing it, they're changing the form.
Pass. Like, I'm in favor, so we have. I think you did, Joy, you were in the one.
Yeah.
Alright, we're okay.
There's, there's four votes in it. Four votes are not there. Where it's not, there's, there's, there's. For, uh.
Well, Larry abstained. Joe, you were in no. E, you were in. Got it. Okay, next one.
Uh, next one is, uh, uh, twenty, no, sorry, uh, twenty-nine fourteen, Lake Shore Drive, this is a law instructor drive here that is, uh, but basically been approved with the exception of the fact that we were missing a street cut permit, which this week came in. Uh, the job has a street cut permit. Discussion.
We approved this based on the speaker.
That's, that's what happened.
Yeah, we have the.
So we agreed to approve it, and then the speaker permit last time?
Yes.
Okay. Next.
Uh, eighteen oh two, Lake Shore Drive. Permit to, uh, change the photography of the front door. Can I make?
Bye, John.
Or? He said, can I be recognized here?
I just want to scroll down. We, we, we talked about this for years. Now, we're getting a nice permit to do some, uh, then, some removal of certain things and putting these over. And I've looked at this thing forever, and I've asked the question for ever. All that is to know is, show me on print, show me on a piece of paper, where three twenty by ten parking spaces will fit on this front. Because that's the crux of the whole thing. Once we can establish that there's a place for three parking spaces that are twenty by thirteen, then we can talk about other issues. But if we, if we can't find the three parking spaces, then we have to, you know, variance, we have to do something. But the whole crux was the three parking spaces. And maybe I'm missing a boat, but I'm trying to make this one circularer than anything else. That's what the issue is. Now, I saw these beautiful diagrams and stuff like that of what this guy wants to do. Sounds nice, but how does that allow me to get three parking spaces? That's, that's my question, and that's what is all of it for the driving.
Before we move forward, I, I just want to clarify, because I'm not sure of the basis of this permit, of whether it introduces anything new. We've discussed this for many years, as we pointed out in earlier proceeding. I'm going to point that to correspondence that I have authorization from this building commission, because previous determination remained. I'm not discovering what Joe's position is. He's been adamant on that position, and he has looked that up many times before you. My understanding, and Larry, correct me if I'm wrong, what I was authorized and directed to communicate to Mr. Perry's previous counsel was to bring his property into compliance and receive a certificate of occupancy. Then now, I'm reading verbatim to Mr. Beege, what, again, what I was directed to communicate. Please accept that following this confirmation, the corrective actions that must be completed. Number one, return driveway grade to pre-construction grade as shown in the originally submitted drawings. And number two, cut the concrete, concrete buttress back to the foundation and to the pre-construction grade. With that, we set up mini meetings that Mr. Wall was going to meet Mr. Perry to delve out the specifics that, except that they are needed for that. In my opinion, this building commission has considered these issues before, so nothing is new other than, and, and I'm not advocating for a position one way or the other. I'm supporting the record filling in the blanks, especially if we're cannibalizing the part of those previous proceedings. Uh, Mr. Perry has submitted ideas, initiated communications with regard to how to fix those issues. Uh, those have been acknowledged by Larry, who was authorized by the building commission. So here we are. Again, I'm not advocating for a position. I'm acknowledging that Joe has made those, uh, points before. I also believe this building commission has considered Joe's points and made a decision how to move forward and to authorize a certificate of occupancy to be granted from there. It is upon you, whether, whatever pending or interest today is necessary, whether those previous decisions were applicable. Certainly means that it could get offset or whatever, that.
For, for my clear, uh, somebody tell me that this property will be acceptable if we don't come up with three parking spaces of ten by ten. Are we gonna somehow give a variance to an ordinance, which we have no right to do? Or what do we say? I mean. Again, I'm super, I don't know.
Joe, will you give the mic, or not?
Well, here, first of all, to you.
I just don't know what else, what else to say. And if I'm wrong, I'm the first one. At a loss, let's go. But this has been the premise from day one, when, when Mr. Wilson had said that the foundation is still there. It is, they moved the house back three feet. That was the whole thing. We moved the house back three feet so they could have twenty feet in front of the house. That was the whole purpose of it, in the beginning. The house was moved three feet, the front of the house was cut off, that's where, and then the buttress came in, which came back and eliminated the direction of three feet. I don't, can somebody else tell me that the three parking spaces are not an issue?
Ken, can you give us a clarity?
I don't, I don't think so, but I'll try. Um, well, the, the email that Mr. Wilson referred to is what, what I've worked off of, plans, return the driveway grade to pre-construction, and cut the buttress back to the foundation, to the pre-construction grade. So Larry and I agreed to meet at my house, and due to health issues and other things, which, you know, God bless, we never got together, and I believed to get together, and I went forward, we'll get together. But in the meantime, I figured I would tackle number one, and that was return driveway grade to pre-construction grade as shown originally submitted drawings. So I wanted to at least tackle number one, so I submitted my plans via Dan Healy to put in, uh, turf stone pavers, get rid of the gravel that Wilson was never authorized to put there, which gets all over the streets and I'm bussed out, and it's ugly. And, uh, and then, once I get my, again, I, he was busy at the time, so, but once I get my, hey, my turf stone pavers in there, or, or before that, or whenever Larry can, I'll have them onto the house, and we'll look at the, number two, and figure out where to cut the concrete buttress back. So, uh, the idea today was tackle number one, and then look at number two when Larry can get up and, and talk to me about it. So, and regarding the three spaces, I, I forgive me if I'm wrong, but I, I assumed that that was, that was off the table because of this email between Chris and my previous attorney. So, I'm just trying to get to a resolution. Uh, it's been a four-year battle. I certainly appreciate everyone's time and patience during this four years, but I, uh, might, uh, yeah, it's, uh, we're just in the process of it.
First thing that comes to mind is, uh, we have, we have outstanding violations that have not been addressed. And we are not allowed to issue any comments, some violations are addressed. Second thing is, on the, on the piece here, it says, we're, we're looking for something, Healy is gonna do forty by twenty-seven. Well, there's twenty-seven feet, that's, that's the, uh, that's the sufficient. Well, there's twenty-seven feet, that's, that's the, uh, that's the sufficient for the parking spaces. But we, without moving the buttress back, we didn't have twenty feet. I remember we came up with twenty-seven feet. So I would like to see a complete plan of what is proposed. And I agree with getting it back to grade, that's no, that's no problem. But I would like to see, ironically, uh, the complete plan, Joe, how we're going to be addressing the ends. Because as I recall, um, there's a drop-off on either end. And is there going to be a retaining wall? I don't know how we can replace the grade without putting some kind of retaining wall. And I don't see that in requests.
There are plans to keep, you needed two plans, right?
No, I did not.
But there were some that, you know, I, 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 all, all I have to permit application. I have, I have a survey, I have a huge drunk, Healy, and, uh, I have samples of the.
Who, who, does anybody else have that? We have to cite the, the elevation of what we're going to do that?
I've got a site line on the bottom. I've got a site line on there.
But Tim, Tim.
Can I fix you up?
The one thing. Maybe you almost read one time, you walked up the door, that down the east side of the ground. There's a drop, that's a good spot, there's a drop. And then if, if you want to go twenty, you've got the drop off to do it, but you're gonna need something about itself. Is that in this plan?
I don't see it. The drop off from the, from my driveway to my paper, so the drop off.
I was preparing for it, so it's a bit.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, I don't know.
But that's what we, I, I know the whole property.
Well, that's where the gist, where the gist. Yeah, yeah, so that, I mean, that, and then you'll, you'll tell me what to do or the, but it works, it works. Parking is still, which, which I never understood why it was, but. And then maybe you'll tell me why. It's a, it's a renovation. I never had room for three cars. And maybe Wilson told you guys we're gonna make the parking fair naturally, but my house is twenty-eight feet wide. And then put thirty feet parking in front of my house, which is.
Forty feet.
Forty feet, but, but on, on either side, my twenty feet, there are twenty feet, there's a ten foot drop off. So in order to, like, like, cut off the buttress, so cars can pull up to the house. And the house runs thirty feet from the level. Then two of the cars, the front tires are gonna drop down into the seven foot drop off, I guess. So I, I never, it is mathematically possible. Well, I have that.
Well, it's not mathematically possible, it's the rule of orders. I don't disagree. But if you put retaining walls where those drop offs are, I mean, there's a lot of things that could be, and I'm not suggesting. But let me just suggest the order issue, can you hear me? Then I must have slept through it, you. Are we saying that we don't, we're not asking for three parking spaces? Is that what you're saying? Because it's an ordinance.
I, I didn't make it up.
It's an ordinance.
It's a ordinance for a, for a renovation.
And anyway, I'll, I'll get to it, I'm not taking it so back and forth. But that, that, I have pictures, you know, that is no way is a reservation, innovation. That was there because of the side and back parking spaces. The side, the side walls are brand new on both sides. But finally, I said, we moved, we moved, we did. And Wilson, you know, realized what to do and we needed to build three parking spaces. And we moved the house back, we did it, three feet to get the twenty feet. Now, whatever feet this other side of the twenty-seven is probably talking about, it's off your private, because you were talking about and there's twenty feet on the rear private, not in the rider. And if you look at the first blueprint I moved, it's the site plan that's up on there. Wilson's, the, the site plan has three parking spaces in there.
Or he, he drove.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not disputing anything, I'm just saying, the three parking spaces were, that's why they went to the law laws. And it's always been on the team. You even went, I believe you went, you went to the DCA for what? How, how actually, but it was turned down. And the only thing I'm concerned about, and I'm not saying against you to, or your family or anybody else, but what I'm saying is, we have the ordinance, the ordinance is three parking spaces. We've been going along with it all the time. Now, I don't think that our scope, what our, our vision, we, we, we can't approve the property without the three. And he's gotta give a variance.
So, so the issues that have come up, and again, this is for this building commission, and now we're rehashing an application. And, and maybe that's your information, maybe you want to reopen that, maybe you want to amend it, I don't know.
Well, well, I'm telling you.
So I.
Where we're.
Well, I'm getting to that point, please. So the, the point here is, we, we made some decisions, I've been authorized and directed to communicate to the opposing council. I don't disagree that this commission does not have the authority to grant variance. I agree with you. When you look at the application, it was submitted, now it's form over substance, and we get into interpreting of law, et cetera. But under that permit, it was submitted as a rehab. Form over substance, was it or not? I don't know. The subject, the subject system, when they, they were authorized, they repaired by the health department as a rehab. You have the ability to make decisions and consider things grandfathered. So you're also going off what this contractor submitted, right? Which were planned and were great permits. So your options are to consider what actually happened, what is there. You will reopen that permit and have a workaround, does he seek variance? I don't know. You're right, he did seek a variance before and it was turned down. And then for a period of a year, he didn't seek a new one. And so those are all things that I put before your consideration that add to the confusion of this because of the way that the paperwork reads. Now, and then one more point that I wanted to, clarification wise, and Pete brought up. You are authorized to grant permits if there's outstanding violations, you're not required. The code does say that you don't have to.
And then the initial problem, or, or, found it. The basic problem is this, is that it has the buttresses. If the buttresses are removed, then there's sufficient parking space. If the buttresses are not removed, there is not.
And it's not by me.
It's not by.
It is, okay, now, this was.
Turn it on, there it is.
It is wide, it's forty, you got forty feet.
But how is it? Okay. Twenty-seven feet is fine, is the best.
What, twenty-seven? Where do you get twenty-seven?
From the plant.
But I thought you said forty by twenty-seven. I think the plan is coming back for you, twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven feet is fine, maybe ten foot.
No, it's forty. No, no, that's why you're missing the house. It's, it's going north and south, twenty-seven is going north and south.
Oh, okay.
It's a forty foot.
Well, you pointed out the drop offs, right? So there are variance for those.
Which, which could be retaining wall, I mean, such solutions, there could be retaining walls, there could be a lot of different.
I mean, but isn't there an ordinance that prevents me from having a retaining wall that's, you know, that's that? I think we've been.
Well, and, and, yeah, if there is, there could be various, I mean, but we need to, it seems like, and that's why I, I go. It seems like there's different directions here. I thought the bottom line is three parking spaces. What I'm hearing now is people are saying, maybe we don't need three parking spaces. Well, I didn't, I never changed my mind. I didn't know that that was a possibility. And then getting into the building itself, I mean, I have to show you the pictures, so let's stop, let's stop with the parking spaces. The ordinance requires three ten by eight with parking spaces, whether they're around or somewhere else, et cetera. I, I.
Three ten by eight. That's what we need up based on what the, your business. That's for certain levels of construction, right? Is that, there have certainly been properties, and, and there's one that came before the DCA, where they were not required to have the three traditional slots because of the non-conformity. So for instance, is, and I'm asking these questions with private direction so that this gets off center and they can get theirs to the occupancy or move forward. Was it non-conforming before? Were those parking slots non-conforming?
Yes, because it was non-conforming before and that, that was where it is right now is exactly where the foundation of this old house was. So they were twenty-seven, um, uh, I'm sorry, they were, yeah, twenty-seven, um, feet long parking spaces, um, prior to this construction.
They were twenty-seven feet.
Yeah, I think the buttress wall, I saw it before, the buttress wall.
Well, there's that, there's only twenty feet on this property. It's all, there's nothing else, that's why they moved it back three feet so they could have twenty feet. I just wanted you to be correct with that option.
Okay, and it wasn't, the buttress, as it is right now, is exactly where the foundation of the house was fixed.
I thought this is great.
Okay, so obviously those spaces were, um, uh, twenty-seven feet long, right? Or, I, I'm sorry, seventeen feet long.
Thank you.
Seventeen feet.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Sorry.
Joe, that's, well, it was the issue as somehow a transition from being allowed to have non-conforming parking to holding them under the standard of having conformant parking. Is that based on your determination as building commission or is that based on the plan submitted by Steve Wilson?
And it's, it's based by both, except the one word, as you guys are hinting at. In the building, original building for an adaptation, they called it whatever the word is.
A rehab.
A rehab, which by what happened, this is no way we did it, a rehab. The front of the house is gone, the two sides of the house are gone.
It wasn't meant to be. That itself didn't change, that, that was the plan.
Yeah, and, and there was, there was a mistake where we were, it was not a rehab. There was not a rehab. And.
But it's approved as a rehab, right? Guess it was today.
So we put it as a rehab, we decided later it wasn't a rehab. So that changes the need for three parking spaces. However, we got a forty foot wide lot, we drop offs on each side. You're saying you could fix it with retaining wall, but you can't build a retaining wall within six feet of the side setback. So six times two is twelve minus forty, it doesn't work. We have a catch twenty-two.
We can get a variance for the retaining wall. Uh, if you, if you guys want to tie it or done it, it's, it's, that's simple. What, what, what do you want to do?
And so if he gets turned down to the variance, then what's the problem? Then, then what's the steps? You got to tear it down?
No, we don't go. But, I, I, if you don't build something until you get a variance, so we're not prepared. Please let this not get to matter.
Well, okay, so where, where we at then? They, he is trying to do that there, but where are we?
Let's move the buttress.
Yeah.
Then the parking space is moving.
No, no, there's still, he still only has two.
No, they have like three.
No, he, he can't, he, well, Larry's can't hear a lot of this conversation.
There's seventeen feet. Buttress is, is, is three feet.
No, no. You're gonna be twenty feet. Do you remember the buttress gives you twenty feet? Yes, that's the one way. But on the side, you might not have enough, because you're saying if, if you do six, I'm done. So then we only have twenty-eight feet instead of thirty. But that, that would be a start. But I'll let you say, there, you're six feet short. A lot of that, you're gonna begin for two point five nine feet, three feet together. I don't know.
Well, you can't forget, right? The granting of variance.
Okay, fine, so then if you, if you really did, then.
Well, I, I'm just, I'm pointing out the consistency here that you have to include.
There are, there are no consistencies, right?
Which is why you have to point out, as you pointed out, do you, do you want to reach a resolution, hard work, right? All right, so one, is the same need variance, isn't one goes out very clear. I will remind everybody that they did try to get a variance that was suggested. And they were turned down again, obviously, for that variance. And then they were in a catch twenty-two because their, for lack of words, which I won't rehash that because their contractor forward and change things. And, and certainly they nicked a bad, bad life or consideration here because they were in a position before the DCA of asking for forgiveness versus permission, and that usually this is still wrong.
Because our, our image was applied for as is. We wanted, we want to get it approved as we built it. Not, there were no plans, there was no things that were going to be hanging off and this. They said, we want to, just the way this, the way we've done it, we want that variance. I'm suggesting we need to say, what is the complete plan for this sound problem? Number one is the parking spaces. And three may be sufficient, okay? That's it.
And, and we need also on place, how I learned this first. And I'm not advocating or rejecting, but we've also been had a discussion today that it was approved as a, as a rehab. Right or wrong?
I don't think so.
Right or wrong is, well, from, from the legal, the, the application. We have resolved the public record request, the language in there says they rehab. And so then the question become, were they ever required to comply with the three spaces? I understand that goal under the zoning code is where you've been of non-conformant to suit you. And so part of the discussion, and, and to Joe's point, Mr. Wilson was the one who submitted it. But were they ever required?
But, but to add to your thing, so there's a mistake, if you want to call it, I, it's, we'll have it. Also, I'm just saying, also a word said rehab versus military disservice. That was in the state. And it's, I can show you pictures, it's a beautiful little house. Used to call it a rehab, it's been a kindergarten house, it's a beautiful little house. But now it's, it's a two-story house with all the walls and everything else, it's a regular house. But, but anyway, it's just what you're saying, you know, if you're saying, oh, okay, that's what they intended. But then wait a minute, somebody went through all the trouble and all the money to tear it down from the house and move it back to the league because they knew that they needed three parking spaces. So that was action that people did and spent a lot of money doing. Moved into a hospital.
I'm not challenging, I just want to make sure it was somebody who did or they were told to do it, right? Or gave you four, you were going to have to do this, those are the signs. So again, I'm not challenging it, I'm trying to help you. You lay the foundation of what decisions were making here and what they were actually required.
We have no, we have no, uh, definition in our office with the differentiation between you know, and rehab. If you can talk, talk to Tom.
Well, I think that we do actually, by reference, we do because the variance pointed about before is the international building code. Actually, this, this defines what it is. Now, form over substance.
It's true.
You know, for building of what is considered, the issue overall of this, what you expect and what they're paying for. And I am, the only thing you should take away from the things I'm saying is to try to delve out the issues and give you some opportunities to make decisions one way or the other so that this gets off center. Because, and again, I haven't had that capability and I'm not supporting Mr. Perry's position or the building commission. What I'm saying is you've repeated, you said this has been going on for about four years.
Okay, but to make one suggestion, there might be a solution to another issue that you have is if it's not, it's ninety days, that they could issue a ninety occupancy permit. So they'll be on TV and they'll be considering from based on something where there would be a solution to. Because he doesn't, I believe, I mean, one thing, which I believe is correct, okay? Well, he doesn't really technically have an occupancy permit right now. Everybody's standard. And that's, you know, and, okay, so maybe you should at least try to get some, something for him on the occupancy permit so he's in there legally and, and give the occupancy. And then we could put a couple of conditions that find it, maybe they'll make us do something in ninety days to approve or get to a compromise or get some of us. But I'm trying to go backwards ourselves, I'm trying to solve a problem and then maybe we can get the occupancy permit. Hey, Bob.
And the code.
The occupancy permit, oh, the, 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 the occupancy permits, or.
Well, we do, the issue is whether they're renting it uniformly, and that's a different discussion. Um, it, it's, there, there is something else we've talked about, procedures, making sure that happens uniformly. That there is no, based on, you know, there is a thing, thinking or choosing on the ground, but generally unless they've been requesting. The code indicates that you must have, and that should be generally applicable. Without any practice.
Universally.
That's right, that's right.
Well, and I disagree with other people who said, but that's not our. I'll stop.
Larry?
Hey, Bob, or everybody, I, you know, I'm, unfortunately, I haven't been able to understand all of the discussion back and forth, but I, I think I got the crux of it, but, uh, and, and Chris is actually the. And Chris is actually the easiest one for me to hear, but. I, you know, originally, in all our meetings with Mr. and Mrs. Perry and back and forth with the building commission, you know, we had the two issues that Joe's perfectly correct in the parking issue, but then there was the grade issue. So after all the meetings and whatever, and I'm just trying to give you my thought process about what happened. And you may have, this may be, you've already discussed it, but just bear with me. I won't be very long. We do want Tim and Jenny to lower the grade. And that was part of the, the original resolution. The parking situation, yes, the house was moved back three feet to accommodate the three parking places. As Chris mentioned, the permit was issued under a. I'm not sure what you call it, Chris. Was it rehab or a renovation rather than a knocked down, a new house? That is how the permit was issued. I don't know, and Chris, I think you were discussing the ins and outs of that permit being issued under a rehab as opposed to a new construction and what rules do or do not apply. So then this buttress came in and we all know there's no sense in rehashing that. But Tim and I have met, no, obviously not in the last month or so because as you all know, my issues, but. You know, and we've been, it's been a congenial meeting. We've said, okay, look, yes, how about lower the grade? And we do understand the three parking places. And if we can cut that buttress back to the point where we can get the three parking places in, you know, in that 40-foot. We know that we can absolutely get two. It's the third one that, that may be a problem. And as Bob, I think, I'm not positive, but I think as Bob said, you know, I guess is the alternative that we say to, to Mr. Perry. You know, you have to take your house down. So I, I think we're, we're beyond that, but. We do, and part of the original agreement all along was to lower the grade. So if that's what the permit is for, I think that that is acceptable in my mind. Now, again, I, I really haven't been able to completely hear all of your discussion. But the, the, the grade, I, I think is, is the right thing to do. And continuing when I can get out of Gitmo is what I call it. You know, we can get out, Joe, you and I can, and Tim can go down there and look at it. We can, you know, come up with whatever we think to or, or, you know, however many of us need to get down there. Just get this thing put to bed so that we don't really, you know, have to go over it more than the, I think we're in our fifth year. So, you know, I'm not trying to stop anybody's discussion, but what they're asking for with just the grade is, is correct.
Right, so I don't think the passage of time is going to make this any clearer. In fact, all it's going to do is going to cause us all to get what we talked about. I would suggest we consider this permanent application, okay? This is just a permanent application of the property of the driveway, yes, spelled out in the front. So I would make a motion to improve the property.
To be paid to win, there's already been a direct, you know, as corrective action under the other. So that's the, doesn't matter to me. Consider however you want to.
Yeah, they did submit a requirement, so I think in that motion.
I'll second it.
Make more discussion.
I have a question. What is the third item that would require the house to be?
Well, if there is no resolution to this problem, if you can't, if there is no way to build, to put in three parking spaces. Frankly, if he gets turned down for a variance or putting a retaining wall on either side to make his potential parking places widen up to three, then there is no resolution. So you've got to, you've got to. If there's no way to tell he got turned down for variance, I think the only alternative is to tear it down. And I don't think that's a very reasonable alternative.
Can I ask one question, which, you know, that's a terrifying conversation, by the way.
I know.
Can you speak up so that we can hear?
Of course, Larry. So if the house was approved as a renovation, which I think we all agreed was, or not, or was. And if it was built on the original foundation, which it is built on the original foundation between. Front door, then isn't there something that grandfathers made in by having a structure that's renovated on the original foundation?
If it's fully a renovation.
The original foundation was changed. Remember, you moved it back three feet.
But still, this still, that buttress, as we love to call it, is poured on the original foundation. And it's that, that you take down, you see the red, it's not sure where it's there.
And you can, you.
Sorry, I have one question. When to move back, you have to have three more foundations. You can't do the first ones. There's additional foundation in there. The foundation, you know, so well, Wilson came in and put a single block wall three feet back from the original wall and then filled the concrete and then poured the concrete to make, or porch. Because if we do cut down the buttress, you guys, that's going to, I don't know, really reflect. So somehow there has to be some way to get down.
And Tim, that's why I've been trying to say, there would be a plan because there was one plan that I saw where. Now, it's all nonsense, but just try to, and I'm not going to give examples, but yeah, maybe what you did. Keep five feet of the buttress in front of your car. And then from there, then you put stairs or something through that, they had it. But not even, but through that parking space, right? But not only just taking it, you know, from 40 to 35, but that's possibility. And that's why I don't know if doing this first, which, which you're talking about now, is the best thing to do. Until maybe there's, there's a way to come up with a rehearsal plan so you won't be over that.
I appreciate that. I appreciate that. My question, you know, if I, I'd say. Take the buttress out and everybody's happy with the space now, we add from the house to the road. But if I could drop from the door down the ground, it's going to be three that I have to make the porch. Does the porch not include parking space number two because it comes off?
Well, that's why, that's why I just, I didn't know what you have to apologize. If you left five feet of the buttress in front of the door, okay? Well, that five feet is gone. That's what I just said. That five feet is gone from parking. So now that you said every 40 feet of parking, you still have 35. Now, can you do it number wise to make it fit? You'd have to really, it'd be a tough fit, but I'm just saying. That's why, and the second thing is before you do this project, you first find out if you are going to tear your buttress down, how far are you going to go? And is it going to be as low as this grade where then all of us would be covered the same? Instead of doing this first and then do the buttress and then, that's all I'm saying.
Right, I appreciate that.
I want to make additions to the app stuff. If somebody applies for rehab, the permit is applied and approved as a rehab. And they then take it farther back than rehab, they can almost completely park it. That's not rehab. Just because you approved it, the contractor must maintain that they did, they did less than 50% of her to keep it as a rehab. I mean, you know, it doesn't hold anything. I, I, I.
And I, I do not disagree with what the law says and the code says. There is responsibility with regard to the tender of the decision though, that what was granted. And that can't be left to the public. That is on the building commission.
That's right. What was granted was a rehab. Rehab should be less than 50%. And that, the actual destruction of what I call it was much more than 50%. Basically retaining in here for weeks, you know, this is.
So, but the things that we're, now that we're getting to things that are not part of the cited problems or any citation or anything that Mr. Wilson said, I don't disagree with formal substance. That's a basic Senate and legal interpretation. I love, okay, but it has to do with the 50% to the so-called grandfathering of the parking spaces. And to me, if they, if they hadn't moved the foundation back, if they hadn't. I wish I could take a picture, but for a while, we suspended by cable, being held by cables. And I'm here, so would you be, would you be satisfied at any point if there aren't? As, as Kevin John pointed out today, if there aren't specific conditions in the granting of that permit?
No, I have a specific recommendation is, give us a complete plan of what you're going to do and when you're going to do. I don't want to say, okay, now we've got the grade up. Tell us what you're going to do with the buttress. Give us a plan. Show us.
But I think it's fine. It's a leave. Well, today, is that leave? I, I don't know. Again, I'm trying to keep this thing moving and off center.
I don't know what the rush is to pull this out for, for three, four years on, on any way. I would like to see a, I would like to see a full plan of what's going to be done. It's satisfying, the retaining walls, the drop-offs, the, the parking space and the buttress. That's my opinion. I'm not just saying any more. And that's what we asked for all of you. We just don't know what to do with it, frankly. I mean, I, I got asked her, I was encouraged by this committee to get a variance. Then some people from the community came and protested the variance.
I did.
And, and you did encourage me to get a variance respectively, sir, but whatever. And, but I'll say this, after that, I thought, well, I don't think there's ever going to be a time where this is resolved. I really don't. And, and now, you know, there's a lot of chatter about me not being able to get this house. I would, I would like it resolved. I don't want to have, you know, this issue manual I have. I don't do it for any other reason, just for resolution and to limit, figure that it'll be thrown out of my house or torn out. But I, I don't see how it's, if I remove all the buttress, you can't get out of the front door. If I remove most of the buttress, but not five feet, because I mean, the porch, well, then that, 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 the things, the purpose of bringing up that space.
I, I agree with you. I think that's conditional.
I would love to see your, I've been looking at it for four years, but I don't, I don't. If you take the thing out, the house is one month accommodate 30.
Yes, you have, you have, you have 30 blocks.
Yeah.
45. You're only, at most, you're eating 30.
Yeah.
Okay. So, so five feet for the steps. So let's go further then. As a, as a gesture of good faith, if you are provided with what you want and there's a solution for all of the things you've discussed, is this building commission, you, for instance, or others, willing to give a load of confidence and support to the BCA?
I have always said that from the day, the first day that we got into this issue. I, I would be confident we said, solve, you can solve the buttress issue. Tentatively agree by you or others that the buttress could come out. I have two hot engineer reports that say you can't move it. Life insurance, structural engineers looked at the buttress and said you can't move it. I slid those in two months, but I, I've never seen it.
Right, and, and what we should do, as a part of it, we should have our engineer do the same. That, that's correct because I've heard pros and cons about it. I'm telling you what you have to do. And like you say, what's underneath it, what's not underneath it, if you take out the, the foundation and everything else, what we all want. But before we leave, the only thing I'm trying to do is say, could we get you an occupancy permit for the next 90 days? That's all my part of it.
I do, I love that one, I hope, but I love that. But however, you guys know more, me for sure. You, you can't really get anything done with it having these things, you know? I mean, I can, he really couldn't, you know, commit to going to papers until September. So, I mean, the 90 days are better than the.
No, what I'm saying, we, you know, you have a plan, you have a plan, you have a plan on 90 days. I think you could do an occupancy based on.
Well, I guess, I guess my question would be with this, with this mission support, not just one or two of us, but a whole bunch of us support the petition before the BCA to put in some sidewalls in there to accommodate the amount of footage you need for the parking. Because that's, to me, that's the only way you're going to solve it. Without this buttress, not even, that ain't going to solve it. You need more width. And you can't get more width because you got too much to drop off on most of the east and west sides of this house, especially in the west.
Right, but John, I, I agree with that. However, I assume we may get a house and that porch that will be required to take space of one of the parking spots.
Now, now, now if you can get a variance and you can go more to the west.
East.
And.
Yeah, east is open.
Listen, the buttress can't be removed. You're on your buttress only 17 feet on the edge of the road, right? So you're, you're not going to get to 20 feet if you can't remove. But you, maybe you can remove parts of the buttress, maybe?
I don't know.
But again, I, I don't know.
According to the engineer guys, I had this cannon moment. And then Steve Fakena drew some lines on it to show where it is in relation to the original porch. And it's about, porch is higher than the original porch length. So do I steam off four inches and call it porch? There's a porch. Count as a, a parking, you know, and if I force sidewalls and get variances to have structures within my setback and have wider parking, is that satisfied with applying to the parking? Even the buttress or the new porch takes out some of that space? And then finally, is it not, if it is a rehab, and, you know, no offense to anybody, God love you guys, but. It wasn't my, you know, I'm not here to try Wilson by any stretch. But it, it's not like we were, the project was hidden from view, but it was going on. If anybody, anyone decided that this, now that that area isn't doing our renovations, it's a new house. It would have been nice to hear about that before it was moved in my house and that's, you know, another, I don't know. And I, I know people went to my LinkedIn account and said, this BCA was already used to provide us. How can we, you know, so do much more, isn't that what we said? Well, that's another argument. But I was, Wilson at that time is not just, we were going great. We had a thing built and we would get. Some of it was, you know, a war was broken out and I'm like, well, you know, I'm going to cut it down. Go change it. And by the way, why is it he fixes my house? We got, you know, we got a run around, this side walls and retaining walls are full that he screwed up. And I was, it's got to be on my deal and I'm going to be hanging around trying for four years to figure it out with a resolution. So I just, I don't want it to work and I don't want to have fights with people on my beach anymore. And whatever you want me to do, I'll look at the pluses mathematically and, and if it's really possible.
But, but Tim, and I don't want to get into all of it. That's why I say, I don't want the observation. Because you're talking about, I saw that in my experience with the house, yeah, the new, new threshold of the builder is about four inches higher than the old threshold. Someone was meaning, but that old threshold is probably a good three or four feet off the ground. And that's what we're talking about is going down that three or four feet, not the four inches. That's not, that's not the name of the game. The name of the game is the feet that all the ground is. That's when he pour, he enter, start pouring all that stone.
And charge for that.
So, but I, I want to be clear, we did not surprise anybody or sabotage anybody. I certainly identified what we brought out. And I resent that, that you and Mr. Wilson said somehow we're waiting to jump on you.
I didn't say that. I didn't say that.
Well, that's where, that's where I, and, and the second thing is. Uh, when then, there was no problem with this grade until all of a sudden the grade appeared to change. That was under one of the original plans. What were we supposed to do? Say, oh, I knew that grade was coming. Let's tell them. That just appeared. And we asked, we, we said that happened much later than the matter operation. And so we didn't hear anything. And we thought that was going to solve.
You can.
But I know that's a problem. Everybody thinks it could solve it.
For today, they didn't agree.
For sure, you should, and now I, I, today, I'm asking for the authorization to upgrade that. You know, I understand that's maybe we shouldn't afford a stall. I was not even going to think that, you know, we poured rock, it's stolen, and you go, oh, but the rate goes up some buttress, therefore buttress is gone. Now we explain the parking, here you see it. And instead I got, you son of a bitch, you should not afford rock, you buy them and stop.
Yes.
And then I accept from the executives.
That's right.
Totally right. So I'm actually saying, you know, let me restore it to you. It was your way, put down some papers so it looks half respectful. And then we'll figure out what to do with the buttress or the porch or the fact that if it's a renovation or a new construction. And, you know, God forbid, you know, I have a setback system that I decided to mistake. I wouldn't touch because it was a renovation. Now I'll prove it as such. I decided, you mistake, I wouldn't touch because it was a renovation, and now I'll prove it as such.
Well, I don't think, it's not renovation.
You know, good, good mistake too.
Well, I don't know, but it's not my fault, I mean.
No, it's not your fault, Chris, it's not your fault. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not. I think that's true. But the only one thing is that I envisioned, I don't make, take anything else, but you're talking about, you're bringing it down to grade. I think grade is gonna be below the buttress, not, not at the top of it. The grade is not gonna be the top of the buttress. The grade is gonna be below some level of that buttress, and you are gonna have initially wanting down because right now, you have the buttress, you have the stones, everything goes right up to the buttress. So you've got a nice walkway.
Well, then, no, it's about, it's about eighteen inches off the buttress.
Just like, that's what I'm saying, I think it's much more than that. You really forget what you had, like you said, you had steps, and then you have a hill and everything else, so. I'm just concerned that you're gonna go to this, that's what we're gonna do, something has to be done.
That's what I'm trying to help with. I thought, you know, maybe this is, like every, the other twenty-five minutes I've stood here, I come out with this stupidly overly optimistic thought, I thought I'd turn out to get both of those. But today was no exception, because I thought, I'm gonna go, hey, fellas, I'm gonna use what a great idea I had. I'm gonna take the grade down to where it's supposed to be, and then we'll work on number two. Of cutting the buttress down for, Mr. Wilson's email that I sent me here, and then once I figure out something, those are the only things that I missed, and then we'll, you know, all good. But now we're gonna have to talk about parking and buttresses and setbacks and terrible things that I've had with the BCA and all this.
So we've got a motion for a second. We got it.
Larry didn't hear the motion. Can you repeat the motion?
So Larry, still there? Still awake?
Yes, I just didn't hear the motion.
Second. So that's the, that's the permit for the change in the park.
That's the motion, Bob. I, I keep getting broken up here. The motion is to allow the driveway?
That way, in the water restore. And you've seen the petition, have you?
No, but I, I also, I can't, you're, everything's broken up. I kind of flying blind here. And I see Mr. Torres-Purce agreeing with me. It's pretty broken up. It's hard to follow. I'm not blaming you guys, but it, I just.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. So just repeat the motion, Bob.
To allow, to approve the permit that was applied for by you. Have you seen?
To, no, I have not actually seen the permit, but if it is to restore grade, I would say yes. I, I agree with that. And I will look at it as soon as this meeting's over, if you wanna put the onus on me to report back to you guys. But, you know, I, I agree that that's what we want, part of what we want, and this would be a positive move forward for the commission in order to get the complete resolution, which I would, is again, meet with Joe, or however many of us can meet on site, with the Perrys, and after this grade thing is, is resolved or before they actually start, you know, doing the work, that we have the understanding of the parking places and what have you. I don't know if that makes sense.
Says, restore to the original grade forty-five, forty-seven. It says by papers, it does not address how it's gonna handle the retaining walls and the drop-offs. So, are we, we need, we need a complete plan of what's gonna be done.
There's no retaining wall.
But there's drop-offs.
Those are the. Also, you're, you're. We're going out of the areas, absolutely, thousand drop-offs. It's from the buttress to the street.
I'm sorry, I just don't understand. Why, I want to understand your plan, basically, but that's a complaint, that's all I have, just.
Ever seen the entire plan?
The block is right there, and that's, you know.
Anything with buttress and the back of the. The other side? I'm worried about this, because I think you drive a lot, and.
That's why I was concerned. So that's why I lost, they're gonna. Spare the law.
I'm there with the slide.
The only change that the potential of time. When you're starting at the buttress, you want that seventeen feet of carpet.
You mentioned the street.
Because you get, you get the thing. I mean, I'm just trying to think, to go, that's what I'm trying to do, I was trying to find out. Okay, so wait, you. And, you know, I'm just concerned about the, what the other issues, and the derivatives and everything else, the activities. I personally think we have to be all ready to ensure that we have the same number, as I said. You might think it's because of that, that I'm just gonna go down about four feet. It would look shitty.
It is, it is like a little extreme, but I, it's, I don't know. It's impossible to have three parking lots in front of the house, more or less, three around the house.
We drew a plan for it.
You know, I mean, the only way I'd argue is if I worked on this stuff, which was also.
No, 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 we're sure.
All right, so procedurally, guys, just to keep moving here, we already have a vote that started. Second, there it goes, it's big. Okay, so we need to, we need to, we're really probably off track here in terms of that anymore discussion during the vote. So we need to finish that vote. Joy?
No.
Ken?
Yes.
Joe?
No.
John?
Yes.
Pete?
No.
Larry? You know, I, I think we need to move forward with this. I'm gonna go to the favor of that.
Oh, Larry.
Larry already voted in favor. So we have a four or three vote. Okay.
Larry.
Yes, I vote, I voted yes. Joe, I, I can't, I don't understand what you asked.
Looking at the grade. Without looking at, he's asking the basis of your vote, without looking at the grade.
Do you repeat that, Chris?
He asked if your vote was without looking at the grade.
Well, that was broken up, but I think you said, he asked if my vote was to return to grade. Yes.
Let's move on. Will we have any votes, if you want?
Yes. I've got, just a, yes, no brainers here, okay? We've got two applications that need to be denied by the building commission so that they can all move forward to the BCA. Twenty sixteen Oriole Trail, there's a lot that, the law is trying to put the burglar in a setback. Coverage was well over thirty-five percent, and it's a non-performing lot. So, it's a no brainer for us to deny this.
Well, except, did he turn in a permanent application?
Yes.
Oh, he did? Okay, good, we got that one. Okay.
Okay. The second one, we do not have a permanent application, but we will in the form of a preview. We deny this preview based on height, he wants a thirty-three foot house. This is the guy that bought the entire peninsula, what was called Captain's Walk, and is now called Grand Mir. It's Kenny versus Brock, on a dime.
We don't know, perfect.
Actually, he's gonna take it from there.
Are these lots even planted? This is right here, new. This is one of mine. This is the whole peninsula, but is there a lot in the planted?
Yes.
It's all, it's unmuted?
Yes.
Oh, the whole plant, the whole peninsula is one. So the whole peninsula is one lot. So he's using the whole peninsula as a lot?
Yes.
He's gonna come to the house on the whole peninsula as a mountainous. That's what he's gonna do.
Oh, is there a pool? Is it gonna, you know, is it gonna have a. Okay, let's keep moving here. Larry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Next week, so we can get these two canals out, obviously, and these projects, right?
Yes, I think, Luke, if you ask me if we can get together next week to get these out, yes, I can.
Yeah, are sewers in?
We have to, we have to have a permit application before we can deny.
We're giving that, yeah, this one. Okay, but just make sure, that's our alternative. Roads are our own. The subdivision, building section, subdivision, requires, there are sewers in that area. And I don't know if sewers have been implemented on that, on the flats. Be addressed, but that's a whole different ballgame. Long Beach.
Everybody on the other peninsula is, there's sewers.
Yes, sure, sure.
Do we, do we know why we can't build twenty-seven feet?
It's a reason.
That's the one.
Yeah, but that's, that crossface is a huge water table out there, okay? So we pulled the crossface, it's a little bit out, and so it stays above the water table. And the size of the asphalt, as it is, they got a mansard roof, which is kind of a flat roof. And he wants to be at three feet, and he thinks that we'll get a grant.
So I guess we're gonna do it.
But I would make a lawful term to deny twenty sixteen Oriole Trail.
So respect on the denial of twenty sixteen.
Outside that. All right, vote, vote, vote. Joy?
Yes.
Larry?
I'm gonna have to recuse myself. I don't know the job.
I'm your president.
Okay, Joe? Motion to deny twenty sixteen?
Oh, yes, that's a procedure.
Yeah, can we get the vote? Yes, very often. Jeff?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
I'm a yes, okay. So it passed five. Time to extend. Okay, and the peninsula, again, that's, that's really, I think, that may easy enough, Larry certainly handled it, and have you brought back here at the next meeting? Let's say something different.
Yeah, let's say a permit application before we win.
Yeah. Okay.
All right, my agenda is sixteen thirteen Indianapolis, Mark Torres-Purce, and Michigan City lots, and Long Beach lots, and then we got the network.
And the first thing, I said, I don't think already, you got a choice. Was Michigan City.
Why? Well, you're. Both. I copy Dr. Lemay, and someone will, I've been back in course, bottom line, with Skyler York was the planner for Michigan City. I've talked a little about whether they, you know, their whole procedure for access, and whether they, and they're not interested in that. They don't think it meets that. I've suggested an alternate, they have heard what my thoughts were. So I suggested, maybe we can consider the entire project under Long Beach building code, subject to Michigan City approving what we did. The response I got was creative, and I haven't heard. Bottom line is, you come and do what's in your jurisdiction. They wanna fit the whole thing on their, their property that's in the jurisdiction. They're gonna have to get variances or make it fit within there, otherwise, they're gonna have to be patient. I know it's frustrating, and I emailed the homeowners, as you guys know, I work for the councils. It puts me in a precarious position to respond directly to their inquiries or with advice. I would suggest that they deep down the doors of Michigan City too. I can only do what I can do, and I've inquired, they've responded, they've talked to their attorneys. But I don't know what I can do to get it off center, other than continue to try to fly my relationships with them. They're considering it. They don't know any better what to do. And so I've suggested what I think is a workaround, is waiting to hear back.
Thanks, I hate to interrupt this, it's a thirteen hundred year.
You guys, please speak up in the microphone. The only one I could hear was Chris. This is Mark Torres-Purce, the homeowner.
Yeah, I can't.
I can't hear anything.
Dr. Ford, thanks for being so patient. Sorry I couldn't hear. Can you hear me?
I can, Bob, thanks.
Basically, I've repeated the same discussion that I've been following between you and Chris, and actually, the conversation you and I had about, you know, the alternatives. One being to wait and see if the city is willing to, I guess, let us incorporate the property, which is probably not, and they said no. And the other is to suggest that they. Knowing, deny it because you don't have enough property to do it, and then asking for a variance. Again, like I told you, I would think, I'm not gonna guarantee, but I would think that the Board of Zoning Appeals would be very receptive to that, given your situation. That, to me, that's gonna be your best option.
He says that you already called me, he says you left his label by.
There's something in the background. I can't hear any of you guys again.
It must have been in service. Yeah.
All right, so, those options that Dr. Lemay laid out, or one other is to try to continue to work in this building commission working conjunction, as I've suggested to Michigan City. And I'm waiting for a response on that, and what I propose to them is allowing your project to be considered in total by Long Beach, with the condition that it met the requirements in general, that all of your properties in Long Beach be subject to getting a stamp of approval from Michigan City. I got a response of creative, but I haven't heard it before since then. I know it puts you in a tough spot. Unfortunately, I can't advise you legally. Your only other real option to get it off center is to ask for a variance.
Okay, no, that's, Chris, I mean, thank you, that's helpful. That was kind of one of my, I can't remember if I put that out in the email either, to say, you know, if this was all Long Beach properties, again, it's three parcels, all purchased at the same time. The houses is, again, Long Beach, the garage and part of the driveway are separate Michigan City. And if this was all Long Beach, I, I get the sense, and kind of have heard this, that it'd probably be approved. If it was all Michigan City properties, it'd probably be approved too. I mean, all the setbacks are fine, the coverage meets, but because I understand that part is Long Beach, part is Michigan City, you guys can't make a decision for Michigan City. So, yes, I like the creativity, and that's what I'm trying to go with as well, to figure out if Long Beach says, if these were all our properties, this would be approved, oh, conditionally, I understand. And then I go to Michigan City, and Michigan City says, okay, if these were all Michigan City properties, we would condition those too. So it's almost like a joint governmental kind of come together, kumbaya hug or something to say, yes, we both see both sides of this. But I, I think, I'm concerned, and I know, I know Bob said that about going for the variance. I mean, it's gonna be, if I try to do this just in Long Beach, the coverage is gonna be considerable, over, over the limit. I mean, I'm, I'm meeting all the requirements of Long Beach today, but if I just segregate out my house parcel, it, it, it's a pretty big overage. So I'm not, I don't know what the, the, the. Hill's board typically approves.
Yeah, and your, your sentiment, that we understand that those are your options. Otherwise, contact Skyler York and Michigan City, and he is the city planner, and we can have a united front on that. And that's the best I can do, but I, but I, like I said, I've suggested that joint, let Long Beach do the heavy load. We could even enter into an interlocal agreement that will allow it, since the principal.